Okay, it's six o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order and adopt the agenda. It is January, February 23rd. And it's a regular meeting of council that we're having. So be it resolved that the meeting be called to order and that the agenda of the meeting be adopted as circulated. Could I have a motion please?
I'll move, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Campbell, motion? Move it and Councilor, five seconds. Any comments, questions? Okay, can I call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Terry.
Member.
So then we'll go down to, we're gonna move the delegation up.
Yes, did you have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Oh, should do that first, correct. Okay, are there any additions and deletions to the agenda? None? None? Okay.
Did you have any deletions or additions?
No.
Did you? No? Okay.
Yes, well, go ahead.
The, which is the number is? The employee code of conduct.
Yeah.
We look at that one at the same time as we look at our, our council code of conduct.
You wanna do that? That's fine.
I was gonna suggest that when we got there too now, I think that would be wise. I think we should table it and delete it.
And just wanna, just, we should probably recognize that Councilor Campbell is joining us on Zoom today.
Anyone, do you have any comments? Councilor Campbell? They're gonna move the code of conduct to where we do the, the code of conduct for the boardman. For council, right.
Okay, that's, that's what we had discussed there a week ago or so, I believe?
Yeah.
This is the employee one, to move it to the same time we discuss the council code of conduct.
So the thing mash.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, sure.
Okay, I call for the meeting now.
So wait, so do we want to delete that then?
Yes, you can delete it and I'll, I'll make a note to bring them at the same meeting.
Okay.
If you need a mover and a secondary to delete?
Yes.
I'll move to delete that employee code of conduct from this, from this agenda.
Councilor, say second it. All, any questions? Any questions, Councilor Campbell?
Nope.
Okay, okay, can I call for a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In favor.
Okay, all opposed? None? Terry? This is up.
We follow that, Councilor, you said, we're thinking the same thing. Okay.
Okay, so then we'll go to the delegation. We'll move that up. Who do we have as a, oh.
Ian.
Ian? Okay, Ian, could you just, Ian Lee, right?
Yes, it is.
All right, pleasure to meet you.
ABOL Solutions, pleasure to meet you guys, thank you, Councilor.
So you have any?
We had a PowerPoint, but it's, I guess, there's no TV in here for us, it's.
No, uh, check with.
If you can put it on a disc, I can advance the slides for you.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Can you do that?
We'll just take them out then.
How would you like me to click through it?
I'll advance for you, you just tell me when.
All right. We'll give you a look.
I just need to share my screen.
All right. We'll buzz through this pretty quickly and get some questions.
Yeah, he'll see it on the screen, he'll, he'll have some more than.
Oh, oh yeah, okay, there is up in the corner, okay.
Okay.
All right, we can continue.
Sorry.
I promise it's more than one slide.
My apologies.
No worries. There's a lot going on on that laptop, so. Even if you wanna leave it there, we can, we can leave it there and just, if, if the other councilmen can see it, that's fine too, don't have to get too crazy.
We'll give it one more try.
All right. So we just wanna chat quickly, just about who ABOL Solutions is, give you guys a quick background of, of kind of who we are, so we can just click through. So we founded this in 2020, in July, designed ABOL Solutions, so we really focus on the analytics and the education side of things with our clients. Next slide, next one here. Does it wanna go?
There it go.
And we are the fastest growing part, Motorola partner in Western Canada. For that reason, is we really focus on the education. With municipalities, a lot of our experience comes with the city of Brandon. We've been working with them quite closely on all their municipal buildings. And we actually have a pilot project going on with Selkirk as well. So those are kind of some, some relevant companies that we work with. You can go to the next one here. You might have to hit it one more time. So our goal with this is to contribute to a safer community. And then you can hit it a few times, it'll, there's a few things that come up, but provide community insights, so whether that's traffic insights of how vehicles are moving, or where is getting the most use in your community. Create consistency and familiarity between all the systems that you guys have. And maximize the value of the taxpayers' dollars for the video surveillance, access control solutions. And the big part when we get into communities and RMs is making sure people don't, it's providing that security without invading the privacy. So that's a big portion that we really take seriously, is making sure that people feel safe, but not watched. So we can continue on here. So the solution that we kind of work with is like, so we, we work with Motorola, there's, should be two more there. There we go. Vigilon is the product that we work with, that's one the city of Brandon works with, and the city of Selkirk that we worked on with as well. So they do video surveillance, access control, and we leverage cloud or on-premise for different applications to maximize the value for you guys. So what we were kind of brought in here is there's been a lot of theft in the area, kind of bringing a lot of different characters into the neighborhood. So I guess part of our initial conversation was to put a pilot project in that would have video surveillance in certain areas and capture some pinch points to see what vehicles are traveling in and out of the municipality. To try and limit theft and capture any information that we can kind of pull on any criminals or anything like that. So with the ABOL platform, all the cameras in one place, so whether that's in different intersections across the municipality or in the municipality buildings. We can find the footage very quickly, make it really easy for you guys. I mean, there's not a lot of manpower, we don't wanna, again, have to use another one of the taxpayers' dollars employees to just sit there and, sit there and go through footage. So we're gonna make sure that's really easy. Share the footage extremely quickly and get alerted proactively, that way we can try and stop something before anything happens. So, go through. So this is kind of an example of a pilot project that we're doing with, with Selkirk. So a typical vehicle, it'd be driving down a road, you can hit the button here. Vehicle coming in, as soon as it gets into that line of sight, it'll capture it as a vehicle, you can hit it again. So we get a date on that, a date and time, and you can hit it a few more times here, the objects we get. We get a vehicle, blue, type, small, medium sedan, and we can even pull a license plate from that as well. So the nice part is, oh, yes.
Sorry.
We can view, basically, we can view all of those and be able to pull in all that data all at once. So just kind of presenting you guys with this technology and what's available and the different ways that we can leverage it to try and make West St. Paul a more secure and safe community. Do you guys have any questions about, we just tried to put something very quick together and just give you a basic understanding of what, what we're looking at and what we're able to try and provide for you.
Oh, Councilor Campbell does have his hand up.
Pardon? Terry?
Councilor Campbell has his hand up.
Okay, we'll let him go first.
Yep, you can close, that's okay. We'll just kind of go through that very quickly, so.
Okay, so I, I have a question, so over we, like my area, the residents, I know, I would definitely be interested in something like this. So how? What, Giorgio? Sorry?
Oh no, it's okay, it's okay.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So how, how does, how does, like, if we, let's say we mount this thing over in an area where my area is, you get power from hydro because the RM's paying for hydro anyways, how does it then get the signal to wherever we're transferring this data to?
Perfect, so that's a great question. So the cameras themselves, so these cameras, they actually store the footage on the camera. So we're not relying on any type of internet signal, whether that's like a cellular receiver, which we just use like an LTE receiver for that. So we're not dependent on that, so all the footage is stored on there. And then we use a cellular receiver whenever you wanna retrieve that data. And basically, we send a very low resolution stream over the cellular network, so you don't have to basically use a ton of data. So we try and maximize the use of that. Does that answer the question efficiently?
Well, so if, if, you know, is the low resolution data good enough to pull license plate and stuff like that? Or does that have to then be, you know, go to the physical camera afterwards to get like a higher resolution to be able to get that?
So when you request a higher resolution, that's when we can pull, we can request a higher resolution through the cellular receiver. So if we're just watching live footage or something, we'll watch a very low resolution stream. And then when we need to get in and zoom in and get the detail, it'll actually send the higher resolution. So it's gonna scale based on what your needs are. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Fiber?
Okay. So if you disconnect, if somebody disconnects the camera, does this continue to store the data?
So in terms of power, no. So if, if power's completely out and that, the camera will not work. You would lose the recording of that timeframe that the power is out.
If there's a backing up somewhere?
So everything is gonna be recorded on that camera redundantly with SD card inside of the camera. And that's rated to minus forty as well for us, so we're good in, in these climates.
You mentioned Selkirk, I wondered, wondered if you could tell us how and where Selkirk is trying to use these cameras? Because we have a lot of traffic on some streets.
Yeah.
For example, grass for a real ton of traffic.
Yeah.
So you're not gonna, I don't think you're gonna use it there. The main arteries, where is Selkirk using it? Are they using it in main arteries or only construction sites, or where?
So Selkirk is using this less as a security measure and more as an analytic measure. So they're put like, the first pilot project is actually placing it at the entrance of their park. So they can count how many vehicles are coming and going and when they're coming and going. So they can make better decisions on when they're gonna invest and so forth, and what different events actually attract people. So they're using that in a different method, but also be able to track license plates if something does happen in the park. Because they've had some issues at the skate park and so forth as well.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
So it alerts you proactively, so it alerts you on your phone?
Correct, so we can send this however, we, we, again, decide to set this up in conjunction with you guys. So for example, if we put a license plate that has been suspected of a crime and they've been hit multiple, multiple houses or anything like that. We can actually send a ping to whoever, whichever user or anybody that we'd like. Just basically saying like, hey, this vehicle's entered the area, you know, maybe go take a look or send a car out there to take a look and see what's going on. So we can proactively take a look and make sure that.
So each camera then is a separate unit with a separate hard drive?
Correct.
And how much is it one camera to set up with a hard drive?
So the cameras themselves are around a thousand dollars. And then the cellular receiver, kind of around the eight hundred dollar mark. And then there's some ongoing maintenance fees and everything, or it's cloud video surveillance fees for that, and then your cellular fee. So basic cellular portion, so whether that's Bell, Rogers, or MTS.
Would each camera have to have that cellular eight hundred dollar?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so we're looking at two thousand dollars per camera.
Per camera plus some installation, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So the, the idea that we use for these is to make sure we set these up at pinch points. So kind of where your basic entrances are gonna be to an area, so we can capture the biggest amount and cover as much as possible.
Yeah, I'm just wondering where those pinch points would be for us. I guess there would be some developments that have no exit, entrance, exit except one. Then you would have people coming in and out.
Correct.
You capture them that way. I'm just thinking heavy, heavy traffic areas, this would not work very well because you'd have so much footage, right?
Yeah, but that's, that's okay. The cameras are, manage to store it no problem. Like, you're gonna get over two weeks of, or even a month of footage of all these vehicles, and it's got no problem processing that much footage.
Uh huh. How long does it keep the footage?
So it's all dependent on motion. So it, it tracks motion, not trees blowing in the wind or deer running across the street, tracks strictly on vehicles and humans. So if there's nothing happening late at night, it's not gonna be recording. So it's all dependent on motion. So typically with these cameras, we're gonna see between, you know, fifteen to thirty days. If you wanna go up higher, we can even get them up to about a hundred days of footage as well. And all this footage can be backed up too, so if you do find something interesting and wanna back that up, we can pull that back and save it so it doesn't go anywhere. So it's bookmarked.
I'm trying to think, like, we have video surveils at work that we've installed, but it's all in one network. So I can pull it off my phone.
Yeah.
If I get an alarm, I can look at my phone, I can look at the camera, I can find out who's there.
Correct, yeah.
But in this case, you're not connecting all these cameras together, each camera is individual. So if you get an alert, it's coming through your phone, through that cellular network that you're talking about, right? And then you're looking to see why are you getting alerted? What would trigger an alert?
So a trigger of alert would be something like a license plate that is wanted, or if you guys have certain hours that you guys would want, you know, any type of alert. Hey, a person's loitering in this area for a certain amount of time. A vehicle stopped here very suspiciously. So we can trigger off multiple alerts, we can be targeted off of gunshot noises, car like glass breaking and so forth. One use that we're actually just implementing in the RM of Rossar is perimeter security for one of their municipality buildings. They've had a lot of theft in the building. So we basically determine that if there's a person walking up to the building during certain times, that it will trigger a siren and strop outside. And potentially scare the suspect away, which is something that we've implemented in multiple places as well.
That's your regular alarm system goal that you threw in?
So that would be more so an internal alarm system, is breaking into the buildings. But this is more for yard security, so tractors that are stored outside, and, and different things that are stored outside. It's a way of stopping them from even getting into the building and causing damage.
Okay.
Councilor, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Kluver asked some of the questions I was gonna ask, so thank you, Councilor Kluver. How do you get around, like, I mean, people are always getting monitored everywhere you go, whether it's a retail or a hospital. But how do you get around any concerns people might have by saying, you know what, I, I don't wanna be monitored? You know, they have a concern that way. Is that something that can be overcome? This is my first question, and then I just wanna build on a comment that you said earlier about timing. If we wanted to time these cameras where they were working only between like ten o'clock in the evening until eight o'clock in the morning, we could do that?
Absolutely, yeah. So to go to your first question, privacy, which is a big concern. So one of the biggest privacy things is facial recognition. We don't go into that at all. And it's, the biggest portion of privacy is how you implement a system like this. Are we using this for something petty? Are we using this for, hey, you littered? That's when you really start to feel watched and it's not becoming anything for safety anymore. Now it's becoming something that's kind of pestering the people. So in terms of privacy, we can set certain privacy zones in cameras as well. So if you have, you know, someone's house that is, is in an area and they feel like, hey, I don't wanna have this, we can actually put a nice big block there. And you cannot see into that property at all, it will not record or even show anything that's happened in there. So we make sure that it's only public ways for the sole intent of protecting and making a community safer and more efficient.
Thank you.
Councilor Kluver?
Well, thanks for coming out. This was prior to the election, I've just talked with some of the RCMP officers on different projects and ways that they thought they could help us, or ways we could help them as, you know, the eyes and ears for the community when stuff is going on. So I was speaking with another counselor from another municipality and then he told me about yourself and Chad, and here we are.
Yeah.
But we, we're looking at, like, last year we had a fire in the Trails development. Where I, I started getting phone, or emails from all the residents, they got all the doorbell cameras. Hey, we got footage of these cars going in and out, you know, right at the time it went in and it went out. But you could never get a license plate number because it's, you know, you're watching a car go down the street. Where I was looking at more this kind of thing at a pinch point, like you said, Rivercrest, Listor Rapids, we got one way in, one way out. Where, I don't know if you'd really be getting the alerts, but you'd be using it, okay, there was an incident at three o'clock in the morning or two o'clock in the afternoon. What was the traffic going in? Was there a car that went in just before that and left right, you know, when it all happened? It's a way for us, as the constable was saying, if we can get license plate numbers, more so not, most of the time it's a stolen car. But like you said, also, it's narrowing down that plate. Did it go into another community? Did it go into, you know, from the Trails to Rivercrest? Is it doing the same thing over and over where we, we can start flagging that and actually giving that footage to the RCMP with something to, something to look for? And you're like, just not leaving it as, yeah, we got everybody's doorbell cameras, but what's going on? I, I saw the videos when this fire happened. It just, they weren't high enough calling to see, you know, this one looked gray, that one looked blue, but it was all within the, you know, five minutes of time after that fire started. So that's why I kind of looked at this and brought it to council as maybe a pilot project, picked a couple of communities. And with the costs that you're bringing up to me, like the, the RCMP was giving me some different packages that, just to look at. Because I had no clue what, what they'd be running in. This is significantly less than what they were giving me, the five to seven thousand dollars a camera with the setup, which is, you know, to get all the air, you know, a little bit of the whole RM done would be a big coin where, you know, when you're in the two to three thousand dollar mark. It's easy enough, I think, for us to start a project like that and see how it works. And maybe pushing it into the developments at the developer's level. When we're starting to set up DAs and stuff, hey, you gotta put this in too. Because it's not only gonna help them during their construction time with the theft of a material, but it's gonna continue helping us through, we've all seen it on Facebook pops up, hey, this guy knocked on my door this afternoon, you know, had nothing to do with me and then all of a sudden ran off. Well, now we'll see how many areas is he doing that to, so. So thanks for the presentation.
Thank you. To add one thing, in terms of the, the concept of each camera being its own individual entity. The cloud platform itself brings everything all together, which means we can search across multiple cameras all at once. So if we have a vehicle description, we can actually click on that vehicle and sort out exactly if they've been to other cameras in, in that timeframe. So it all works together kind of seamlessly to bring everything all together as opposed to a bunch of individual cameras itself, so.
The question that I have is how mobile are the cameras?
It's just power, really.
Well, I mean, like, let's say we had a problem in one area and then the problem ceased. Could we take that camera and put it in another area?
Absolutely. So what we've seen in this is it's like a hose tie, that's for a pole mount, so we don't actually have to drill too much into poles. So we can actually have this camera sit on a pole mount, so it wraps around the pole. And then as soon as you guys wanna move it, you just basically unclip all those, and then you move it to the next pole that you guys would like to put that at. And because it's a cellular receiver, it's just plug and play, it's only, you guys have cellular signal. Which I think the RM is pretty good because you're quite close to the city in between Selkirk, so.
Some areas.
Some areas.
Just another follow-up question.
Yeah.
I, I couldn't see someone doing this, but you know, if someone wanted to like, if they knew a camera was in a certain neighborhood and they wanted, they wanted to disable the camera. I don't know why they'd wanna do that because their face would be all over, all over the camera, but how, how good are these cameras in terms of being tampered with?
So we do have tamper alerts on them, so if somebody is shaking it or, or something like that, we can play with it to make sure it's not going off crazy with the wind if the pole does move a little bit. So we can adjust that, but the cameras are, are quite durable. I mean, they're tested to be outdoors, so things blowing around, hitting it are fine. Things that we've ever seen is people throwing rocks, but I mean, throw a rock, and it, it's also camera placement as well. So if we're gonna place these around fifteen feet, for somebody to go and put up a ladder to try and get up to it, or pull up a car to stand on it to try and get to it. It's quite obvious and really, yeah, not, not the easiest way to do. So we haven't seen too much, too much kind of building around with cameras, they usually just stay away or go to another place.
Got anyone?
No.
Councilor Campbell, you have any more questions?
No, thank you for the presentation, it's actually been informative and I don't know how we'll proceed here, but I definitely would like to discuss it more at a council level.
So I got, I think Councilor Pack can touch upon it, but I'll be a little more descriptive. How, how is it for cyber attacks?
So that's a great question. So there's, I'm not, I'm very glad you asked this. There's a big, big issue right now going on with video surveillance. You guys have probably seen the whole Chinese spy balloons and so forth. So the, the largest, two largest camera manufacturers in the world are actually owned by the Chinese government. So there's something called NDAA approved, which is the National Defense Authorization Act. And these cameras are all NDAA approved, so everything from recording to the cloud portion and your viewing is all encrypted. So you're extremely secure with no backdoors, it's not manufactured by the Chinese government or anything like that. So it's actually manufactured in the UK, came right here.
So I, I guess then, does it have to be updates then to these for, to prevent, does cyber attack become more sophisticated every year?
Of course, yeah. So with, with the cloud software, the cameras get updated automatically. So you guys are not gonna have to worry about it, and again, with maximizing kind of the taxpayer dollar is the cloud portion of it does all of it for you. So you don't have to have any IT dedicated to managing the system at all.
So then, are you managing the system or are we?
We'll maintain it, so what we can do is we're here to support you guys to make sure you guys know how to use it. And also with this, you guys do get support from the manufacturer as well. So our, our role is to make sure you guys maximize it. So however you guys need roles set up or be able to view footage or be able to export it and share it. To, hey, we haven't used this in three months, you know, I don't, I haven't exported footage in a few months, how do I do this again? It's something we kind of developed, and if we wanna give you guys a manual or something like that, we do custom manuals, custom videos. So that's our roles to make sure that you guys get the most out of the solution.
So, okay, so I guess, is it a one-time support or is it a continual support? Do we have to pay a service fee to get support or how does that like?
So, so the most fair that we found doing it is we, for basic little service questions, I, my role, I don't wanna charge you guys for that. If you guys have a quick question on how to use it, I'm not gonna bill you guys for it. If there's any maintenance, like physical changing of the camera, that would be a just base service call. The only ongoing fees that you guys would see with this is your cellular subscription, which would be done through like a Bell or MTS or something like that. Or, and then the other thing would be for the video camera itself, there's a subscription fee that goes with that due to like the cloud hosted portion of that.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask, I think I know what you said, I just wanna clarify it.
Yeah.
So it, it takes a look that we have to manage the camera, if there's updates that come to, we have to initiate the updates?
Nope, auto initiates.
An auto initiation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if it gets cyber attacked, then what?
If it gets cyber attacked, then I will, I, I'll personally refund you guys everything if it gets cyber attacked. That's, yeah, it's.
I did just have a, a question, you had said that the storage is on an SD card.
Yeah.
And we did speak about how unlikely the camera would be tampered with, but if the SD card was removed, is there security measures on the SD card that other people wouldn't be able to read the information or?
That's a fantastic question. I'll double check on that. I'm ninety-nine percent sure it's all encrypted on that, on that disk drive to that particular camera, like the hard, the serial number on that camera. So I'll double check on that just to confirm.
There's no hard drive on the camera?
So the SD card would technically be the storage.
That would be your hard drive?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have any more? Okay, Councilor, go ahead.
So you did say that it's a lower resolution constantly feeding if you wanna get a few. So you did say that it, it's a lower resolution constantly feeding if you wanna get a fee on it. But if something does happen, you, you do have the ability to go in there and I guess get a higher resolution between, say between this time and that time, whatever went out of a certain area.
Yeah, so it's gonna be recording completely in high resolution on the camera. It's only you viewing it that it's gonna show you a lower resolution of it, just to save that bandwidth. So you're not paying for, you know, five megapixels of data if you just wanna check a camera. You're just gonna get, you know, half a megapixel, just so you can overview and see if there's anything happening. And as you zoom in, it clarifies. It's something that we can do a present, a full software demo for you guys if you guys would like as well, just to make sure you're confident in the software.
Anyone else have any questions?
Just one more.
Okay.
So let's say one camera with whatever software, what, what would it cost us per camera?
So annual subscription is fifteen bucks per month. So that is, what? My math is not good. Hundred and eighty bucks? Hundred and eighty bucks, fifteen bucks a month?
Yeah, close enough.
There we go. So that's, that's the subscription fee that would be ongoing for it. And then the camera itself, it's around a thousand dollar mark and then the cellular receivers, the outdoor LTE one that we use is around eight hundred dollars. Installation, again, it all depends. We have to have that arranged with Manitoba Hydro. So just a simple, a simple one ten feet is perfect for us.
So you're looking at about two thousand dollars a camera?
Yeah, two thousand hardware and then you have your cloud fees and then the installation. Those are kind of the three portions of it.
Can you say the cellular subscription?
Yeah, you're, I see your cellular.
How much is the cellular subscription per camera?
Depends how, it depends how much Bell likes you guys, Bell or MTS. We can take a look at that with you guys.
Be like a cell phone?
Yeah, cell phone. So you have a SIM card. So again, it's based on your usage. That's why that low resolution is very important.
Why would we use Bell?
Bell. You guys use MTS?
I don't know what we use, but you can use any.
You can use any, yeah, you can use any. Rogers, if you guys use Rogers.
So do you need one Bell or whatever cellular per camera, or can you have one that picks up on all the cameras?
Depends how close they are. There's different ways we can leverage networking to do it. It depends how close it is really. But we can work on that on, on a case per case instance.
Sit, anyone? Constable Campbell, got any questions?
Internet reception here, so bear, you know, I'm gonna probably jam out for a second, try to connect to a different network here.
Okay.
It's lagging on me.
So you have no questions in the meantime?
No.
No?
No, I'm good.
Okay, good. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you guys very much for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So that now takes us down to numbers.
Up to number six.
Six, yep, six point one. I just see everybody typing here, so I just want to make sure that. Okay. You guys ready?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
We should, we should wait for Mr. Constable Campbell.
Yep, we can do that.
Can you see and hear us, Peter? We can't hear you. You're muted.
Yeah, you had me muted, so I unmuted myself now. I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're on a number six point one. Reason for rejection of the S two twenty-three dash two zero eighty-six application. The resolution is whereas application has been made to subdivide our rural residential overlay zone property located at five fifty-one Rosner Avenue into two lots, both measuring twelve thousand five hundred square feet in size. And whereas council has considered the application, the information received as part of the application process and the regular planning district development plan, the Middle Church secondary plan and the West St. Paul zoning bylaw. Now therefore be it resolved that the subject application be rejected because the application is not consistent with the West St. Paul zoning bylaw two dash ninety-nine P.
What about Mr. Mary? I just wanted to say it's five eighty-one Rosner. I think you might have said, you might have said five.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. So can I have a mover to the, Constable Clyber moved it. Can I have a second or? Constable Bishetti seconds it. Any, Pat Ken? Sorry. Oh, Constable Campbell has a question?
I, I do. So I don't remember this being common practice because we voted on this and we made a decision. So why is this, why does this come up now and we have to give a reason for this? Is this, is this something new?
Yeah.
Can I have the?
Sure, it's a, it's a requirement now by the Planning Act for any subdivision that gets rejected, you have to provide a reason why.
But didn't we provide a reason why last time?
Nothing specific.
Oh, okay.
So under the, yeah, so under the, the previous one, I don't believe Bill C thirty-seven was in play. But Bill C thirty-seven is in play now.
Yep.
And so for anything we reject, we have to provide a reason.
It has to be a written response.
Yeah, a written response.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Constable Campbell?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so I call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None carried? So six point two. Same thing, subdivision S two-two dash two nine seven seven. Whereas the Council of the Rural Municipality of West St. Paul passed the resolution two zero two-three dash zero seven four to approve subdivision application S two-two dash two nine seven seven located at eight ninety-nine Holmes Road rolls four one four three zero zero and four one four three one zero to subdivide the land into thirty-two lots ranging in size from one point six acres to four point zero six acres and a public reserve and internal road network subject to several conditions. Whereas certain clarifications is required of resolution two zero two-three dash zero seven four and section one twenty-five of the Planning Act provides in part that the council may, by resolution, vary or rescind any condition it has specified on the clause one two five thought one dot B or specify as new condition. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the Rural Municipality of West St. Paul rescind a portion of the conditions set forth as the second sentence of condition number thirteen, which reads as follows. Any additions, buildings on any of the proposed lots shall require a conditional use approval by the West St. Paul Council and vary and move condition eleven, two, thirteen, remaining sentence and fourteen of resolution two zero two-three dash zero seven four to form part of condition one C of resolution two zero two-three dash zero seven four and be addressed in the development agreement. Could I have a mover to the, Constable Clyber moves? Can I have a second or? Constable Bishetti seconds it. Any questions, Constable Bishetti?
I don't like the way this is getting worded yet because it's losing the whole feel of what, what we were trying to get at by saying no second, like the second building has to come with us for a conditional use. If it was the planner that decided that meeting on how the wording was to be sent during that resolution. And if it can't be put like that, putting it into a development agreement is alluding to the person that, yeah, we will allow you to put a second building up, you just have to come to council first. So to, to not have it come up as a conditional use, really, it, it throws a wrench in everything because it, it's what we were trying to stop from happening, the same as, you know, what we saw happen to Capulis. You know, previous council for four years, we were always trying to skirt around and trying to put a different building in there and trying to make it fit. And it's, it's just not, I brought the resolution up so, or that division up, so I'd like to, I'd like some more opinions from someone else, anyone else, something else.
I was wondering if we could have our assistant CEO speak to that. She has a rationale for it.
Yes, so how it will read if, if this resolution passes by rescinding that clause that in, in item thirteen. You, you'll have, what's remaining is there shall not be more than one primary building per lot. And, and the reason why we can't request or, or require a conditional use for a secondary building is because that would circumvent our, our current zoning bylaw. So we can, council can limit the use of land and buildings, their construction to being one building, but we cannot make up a new conditional use approval by resolution.
So you're saying that we could put it into a DA that a secondary building would have to come, be approved by council, but at the same note?
No, something like that would be best handled through a change to a zoning bylaw.
So we'd have to do who by law is in the council, should we?
And it, it does.
Which we're supposed to be doing anyways.
Right.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay. So what we can do here is if it's council's wish, is you can, you can limit to one building. How, how it's, how it will be worded will be not more than one primary building per lot.
The problem I have with that is that we've, like, I won't use any of the companies names. I'm using Capulis as an example because it was the most current for us to do this. Is they put a main structure up in the front where they're running their business. They realize they've grown, now they wanna put their, move their manufacturing to a secondary building behind them. But now we're adjusting it to a point where it's gotta fit, you know, their loading docks from their existing building. And, and it's, it's, you know, it's coming in for variances too far back, too far side, to the side. And, and it just throws the whole, like a streetscape without, like, we're looking at thirty-two lots here. You know, if every building, even if, you know, half of them put up a second building, that area would be just littered with buildings all over that acreage. And we're looking at the backs of them from the perimeter, from, from pipeline. We're, we're not looking at the front streetscape where, you know, it's gonna be all left nice and neat and tidy and landscaping's gonna be done. We're looking at the backs and that's what I'm trying to stop.
Yeah, I agree with Constable Bishetti.
Constable Clyber?
The one thing that if we are going to remove it from the conditions, I would like the word must to be added and must be addressed in a development agreement. Whether that it shall, it could be, maybe, it must be in, in, addressed in a development. In a development.
Anyone? Got anyone?
The, um, one thing I would like clarified from Derek Ewing and senior director of planning is why we are being told on, to include conditions in our resolutions for subdivisions because they're not appealable. Once the subdivision goes through, then you can't appeal it. And if we go into a DA, those conditions can be appealed.
Right, so I, if I may clarify. Um, if in your subdivision approval resolution, you've required certain conditions be met, they must be met. So even if there is an appeal of the development agreement, if they're not, if the development agreement does not meet the condition you've specified in the approving resolution, then, then that would not satisfy the requirement of the approving resolution.
Right, so if I'm taking the fence out and I'm putting it in the development agreement, can I then tell them how quickly I want that fence up in the development agreement?
We, we have in the past stipulated specific dates that certain items have to be completed by, in, through development agreement.
And I'll, I'll say, this, one of my concerns is so similar to Constable Bishetti, where I don't like the secondary, secondary businesses in the back. Third, we've got Capulis and we've got those secondary buildings and there was supposed to be a fence up there a long time ago and the fence still isn't finished. So I'd like to see that that fence is done sooner than later. And then put up your buildings if you like. And then what's the other ones that we specified in eleven, twelve, thirteen? Let's just go to, to the actual planning meeting here.
I can summarize those for, for council if you like. Uh, point eleven was that the applicant owner shall provide a perimeter fence along the property lines to the satisfaction of the municipality. Twelve, the proposed lot should, shall be surfaced with a holding tank and no septic fields. Thirteen, there shall not be more than one primary building per lot. And we're proposing to rescind the, the second sentence of that regarding a conditional use. And fourteen, the proposed public reserve shall be surfaced with gravel.
My only concern in legal language, shall is not always definitive. So if you put must, it has to be done. If you say the proposed public reserves must be surfaced with gravel, they have to do it.
Right, for, for us, a shall is, is this, is it, is a, is a must? It would be a may is where it's permissible.
Okay, well, I would, I would then say if you're gonna put those in a development agreement that it says that these must be addressed in development. It has to be. And we should put a time limit on the perimeter fence, but when you come back with DA, we'll talk about that time period because if I know developers, they get done very quickly with their subdividing and so forth, and then the fence can sit there for a long time. And I would like that fence to go up with, within a year for sure.
Yeah, and just to, just for some background information for the situation on Capulis, the delay in the rear fencing there was, had to do with the residential developments and, and planning that and knowing what elevations were required there. Because the, the fencing is built on, on a bit of a berm and they needed to have those, those plans prepared before they could construct the, the fence there.
Okay.
Go ahead, Constable Packton?
Yeah, just with regards to the, the fencing issues, is it possible in the development agreement to put within a hundred and twenty days of occupancy permit?
For the perimeter fencing?
Yeah.
With what, but what occupancy permit of what?
Oh, right now.
The one building or the?
It, it might be better, something that we could address with just giving like a end date where it, would, the developer would have to construct it by, say like X amount of months or whatever from the, the time of signing.
Yeah, I'd like to see it done within the first few months of the completion of the subdivision.
Constable Campbell?
I, I was gonna say, I agree with Constable Packton and Constable Clyber. Why don't we have it triggered? Something similar like we did with one of those other subdivisions, say after, you know, X amount of time after five building permits are pulled, are, are issued or some, something like that. Right, that, that the fence has to be completed after X number of building permits are pulled or something along those lines.
Okay, well, we, we could always discuss that too, once the development agreement comes back to us.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, put that condition in there. It's a good condition.
Yeah, but, sorry. But at this point, we're taking, we're taking out that, you know, has to come to us for that second building. Like we got into this fence now, but we're looking at, we're alluding that they're gonna be allowed to put a second building up as long as they come to council.
So I have a question for our planner. If we let the, if we... If we left the, if we left the clause the way that Councilor Bushetti would like it, um, our development agreement's not coming for a lot, is it?
Um, well, um.
Could we then change the bylaw so that it would reflect what we want?
Uh, potentially, it's hard to say, uh, if, if council is looking at, um, um, like a fairly significant change to the zoning bylaw, it's, it's hard to say how long that could take.
Yeah.
I, I, whatever, um, uh, requirements are in the zoning bylaw at time of, uh, an application coming forward, that applicant would have to follow those requirements, but.
I will add here, um, that this subdivision has to be approved by the Red River Planning District. And I would say our, our planner will be recommending, if, if we do not make these changes, they will be addressed at the Red River Planning Board. Uh, the Red River Planning Board won't pass a resolution which circumvents our zoning bylaw, by law.
No, it won't.
So, um, you know, council can address it, uh, this evening, or, uh, if, if you wish to have the Red River Planning Board address, they will do so when it's, uh, scheduled for their meeting.
Well, I would like some more information from the planning department that actually gave us the resolution to write that night, and not just to take this line out, add this, and you're good. Because it doesn't, um, it doesn't answer what we were trying to do.
Um, uh, Chair, how many days do we have for that? Cause we're on a time constraint too, right? We have sixty days from the time we pass it?
Uh, there is a timeline that, um, uh, a response has to be had on this application, or it could be appealed to the municipal board regardless.
Yeah.
And also, um, just for clarification, um, with the new Planning Act requirements, um, any condition that council places, um, as a condition of subdivision, that can be, uh, appealed, uh, as well as, um, uh, development agreements? Any like terms or requirements?
I think the applicant has said they were okay with all the terms, so.
Um, just for further discussions, sir, I wanted to reveal the phone with Councilor Bushetti's concern. So, the way I understand it, Councilor Bushetti would not like to see any additional buildings, other than the primary building as part of this thirty-two lot, lot development. And by agreeing to the resolution in front of us that allows, um, this, or allows applicant, the future applicant to come back on the basis of conditional use to apply for a second building. Councilor Bushetti, are you saying that, um, even though we may have some control with regards to, um, if, if we were to approve a second building, if, that, you know, we, we may have some controls in terms of how that could look like, the orientation of the building, whether there's future landscaping, um, are you, are you, um, you still have further concerns about that moving forward?
Well, to a point, yes, like, I, it's not that I don't wanna see a second building, if someone comes in with two strip malls inside, we're on the renting, facing each other parking lot through the middle, okay, that makes sense, but it's when, I, I'm gonna use the same example, we had, you know, a company manufacturing something, who grew more than they thought they would, now they've, you know, well, we have room behind us, let's put another building up. Instead of saying, hey, let's put an addition on our building, we can't, because we have loading docks there, we have all the, you know, there's other infrastructure there, we can't get to. Then they, they put another building up behind them, and it, it, it really starts to, it, it really clutters the area, if, if you're looking at, you know, thirty-two lots, like I said, if half of them would put up a second building, it really, if they're looking at the back of them, that's it.
Uh, just on that though, it sounds, it sounds like I'm on the same page with you, but I just want to get on that same page a little bit further. So if they came here with a conditional use application, they wanted to build a second building, could we not then just ask them, why can't you just do an addition? Um, you know, wouldn't that be, wouldn't that suffice, uh, to meet your concerns, or?
To, to the point, we can't require a conditional use for a second building under our current zoning bylaw.
So what is this, what is this, uh, amendment resolution doing again?
Well, we're taking the, the four conditions that you had, council had wanted, addressed in a development agreement, and moving that into ca- one C, where we, we address development agreement requirements. And then we are resis- we are, um, rescinding the portion of thirteen, which requires, um, the conditional use approval from council for additional buildings. We can't do that, it, it con- contravenes with our, our zoning bylaw, we don't have the parameter set up. So, what council can do is limit how many buildings are on the property.
Right.
Um, that, that is an option available to you.
So if we wanted to limit to one, is that what this resolution is doing?
Well, the, the wording you have here is one primary building per lot.
Right.
So I'd suggest if, if council's wishes to have one building per lot, that you would also rescind the word primary from that first sentence.
Right. Would you be okay with that, Councilor Bushetti?
The only problem I would have with that is if somebody comes in with a, there, there's, you know, there's up to four acre lots in there. Somebody comes in with, you know, I wanna put three strip malls up in a U-shaped parking lot in the middle. You don't, you know, for plumbers, this, that, like, it, it's, it's that kinda area where we're trying to get people up that are working in their yards, that kinda stuff, you know, looking for smaller places that to run their businesses, I mean, we're, we're not giving them the opportunity to go rent spots like that. Like, I'm gonna use the AWC building, cause we all know that on Capulis. We're, we're restricting that, where they would have to have it all attached one way or another. That would be the only downfall to putting only one building.
So then how do we write this bylaw to achieve what Councilor Bushetti's driving at?
That's what I was hoping that, you know, since our planner was the one that, you know, wordsmithed this for us during the meeting, that, you know, they would've come back with something, you know, fitting more to what we were looking for at the time. And I guess.
This is a minor, put in the conditional use and, and then, we're saying, or the, our zoning bylaw says we can't do that.
Correct.
Now, we, uh, don't have another Red River Planning meeting till March fifteenth, and we have a planning meeting on the ninth. So why don't we cable this till the ninth, and go back to Red River Planning and say, hey, this is, this is what we want, figure it out for us.
I'd be, oh, let's let that.
Yeah, ju- um, just to add, uh, like, it sounds like a lot of your concerns has to do with the aesthetics. Um, and that, that could be something that we look at, um, addressing, like, some ways that we can address that through, uh, the architectural guidelines and landscape requirements.
And how do you do that?
Yeah, I think it would be something that we would have to definitely take some more time to, to figure out the specifics involved there, and, and wanna have some discussions with the, the applicant involved.
So under the CH, which I've just got on my screen now, the shopping standard strip mall is permitted. The self ser- service storage facility enclosed within the building, enclosed within a building, is permitted.
One building?
Yeah.
Now, what if they want, just sorry to interrupt, just cause you're on that, but there's one building, and then what if they have those offshoots, like you see in storage facilities? And now they could come up, put three, they could put four, they could put seven, without even, you know, blinking any light.
So that's maybe where we need to go back to the planner and say, we're gonna restrict it to one building per lot. We'd have to change our bylaw, then to read that it would, any other uses would have to come back to council.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can do it.
Go ahead, Councilor Bushetti.
Seal.
Oh.
Um, if, if we restricted it to one lot, and then changed our zoning bylaw, to say that they'd have to come back to us for a conditional use, would that then apply to this one too, or because we only put one lot on there? You, can you understand what I'm saying?
I, I, I understand, if you, you're saying if in this resolution you restrict to one building per lot, uh, that resolution would stand, um, and so, if you change your zoning bylaw to say a second building requires a conditional use?
Uh, I, I can make that, yeah, yeah. So, uh, once, uh, like, if there's any change made to the zoning bylaw, any application that comes forward, they have to adhere to that, that zoning bylaw. Um, so say these thirty-two, thirty-two lots get created tomorrow, um, you have an applicant come back in like a year wanting to develop, they would have to adhere to whatever, um, zoning bylaw requirements are at that time.
So that's basically gonna do what we're trying to do right now?
Yeah, i- if you were looking to make a, a change to the CH zone, um, that would apply to everything zone CH. Um, we, we do have some, uh, some of the new lots, uh, located on Main Street, on the south side of the perimeter, that are quite large. Um, it's designated as a, a community, or sorry, um, commercial center, where you might expect to see, uh, like, a number of different, um, like standalone big box stores, or strip mall type of development all on the lot.
Through the parking lot and the, yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm worried about, I, I don't wanna restrict this, and then at the end, look at how much we're restricting all over the, like, I'm trying to look at the outfall of everything on this to.
Can we specifically say just for this development?
Through the, the zoning bylaw?
No, through the development agreement.
Uh, well, the, the development agreement for this, uh, subdivision would just be applicable to that, this development, yeah.
So we could, we could actually designate it in the development agreement for just this property?
Can we do that?
Yeah, and what, uh, what it would, what the development agreement would address is that, um, this subdivision, they'd only be allowed one primary building?
Or one, one building per year?
One primary building. Um, so there, uh, if something was classified as a secondary building, say if you had, um, um, like a storage garage that was detached, that would be, um, still something that would be, um, in theory permitted.
But that wouldn't address what the council is saying.
Yeah, yeah, so if you're, if you're looking just to have like one and one only building?
I, I don't wanna restrict everything else that we're doing, like, I'm not saying they're all gonna do it. I don't wanna restrict all the other stuff that's going on in the, you know, the retail, I, I don't wanna turn retail away from us simple, right? So, but at the same time, we gotta look at how it's gonna look aesthetically to the people that already live here.
Right, so bringing it back to this resolution, for this subdivision, is it council's wish to leave, leave it as it reads, that there shall not be more than one primary building? Or would you like to, to change that to, there shall not be more than one building per lot?
I thought we were leaning towards, um, tabling this until we get more information from Red River Planning.
If that's your, the direction of council, then we can, we can table to the regular planning meeting on March ninth?
I would say to council of all the outdoor storage in the new zoning bylaw that we passed, it's all conditional. So anything that anybody would want, let's say, secondary for storage, still has to come to council. So saying the primary, we want only one primary building, that would be what you want it to do?
Good point, but it would restrict, strip mall style, you know, buildings where they would put, you know, two or three on a lot. And, and that's what I could see in this area because of, you know, the zoning that we're in.
But there is the shopping standard strip mall permitted in zoning.
One building.
Uh, yeah, primary.
One building, like, you know, a lot of times you see them come up in two, you know, facing each other, parking down the center.
Well, they'd have to buy two lots then.
Well, if you, if.
You could buy one lot this way, one lot that way, right?
If someone buys that four point six acre lot, you're telling them they can just put one building on there. It, it's kinda.
They might put a warehouse on there, they might put, you know what I mean?
I, I'd like some more input from, you know, Red River Planning, cause if, I wanna look at the pros and cons, and they're gonna tell it to us, you know, is that, can we do this, can we do that? I don't wanna say, yes, we're doing something, and then they come back to us next meeting and go, well, no, you can't do that either, since it was the planner that, you know, gave us this direction.
We need to solve your concern, with your suggestion.
So is that the will of council to table to March ninth?
Yep, yep, you agree?
I agree.
Yeah, let the planner clarify for us. Because there's a lot of, um, areas where everything is conditional now on CH, there's a lot of CH conditional. And then there's, there's lots of permitted too, so we just have to figure out what we're gonna do with it.
Yeah, it's, it's not so much the conditional and the permitted, it's, it's restricting a lot of use, a lot of the, you know, something that might look aesthetically right, but you're stopping it, you know, it, it's, Councilor Clyber, you know, what I dealt with last, last term, so.
I, I, I'll, I'll say this too, is, um, and I haven't looked at this very closely before, and I, I'm glad I'm doing it now, and we might wanna change that, recreational veh- vehicles, including boats, are, are permitted in this area. Which means that you could have somebody with a trailer business come in and store a ton of trailers outside too. Like transco, like trailer sales, just an example, right?
Yeah.
You could have that type of thing in here because it's permitted, you could have boat sales in here because it's permitted. So you'd have that too. But all the outs- outside storage I'm looking at is all conditional. On everyone that has outside storage, exterior storage, either not permitted, or it's conditional. But you talked about a second building, now, let me ask you, how would you feel about, uh, somebody buying a four acre lot and putting trailers all over it?
Well, that's one of the reasons, I guess, we put the fencing all the way around, right? Was to try and stop, cause we're staring at the back, you know, everybody going down the pipeline or the perimeter is looking at the backs of the buildings. It's not like driving down the perimeter, you know, looking at, on Capulis and looking at the front of the buildings, that's why we really.
Think about that for, if you had that on the corner now, where we're having commercial highway, would you wanna see trailers on the corner? So that's maybe why we have to go back to a bylaw zoning that, that Derek wanted to talk about, I mean, do we really wanna see that in that zone?
So I guess we'll go back to this year, we, we've tabled this year now to March ninth, right? Okay, so now we'll go down to.
We'll have to move it.
N- no, you can just provide the directions.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, uh, so now we go down to seven point one, be it resolved that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of council be held on February seventh be approved. Can I have a mover please, Councilor Bushetti moves, Councilor Pakten seconds it, any questions?
So on, I do have a question on these, um, you sort of have re- resolutions here on the committee of the whole, but they're recommendations?
Recommendations, which we'll bring forward to a, a future council meeting as resolution.
Okay, so we just put them as recommendations right now? All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Councilor Campbell? None?
Nope.
Anyone else? Okay, can I call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
I, all opposed? None? Okay, seven point two. Be it resolved that the minutes of a regular meeting of council held on February ninth be approved, can I have a mover please? Councilor Bushetti moves, can I have a seconder? Councilor Clyber seconds it, any questions, comments? Councilor Campbell, you got any?
Nope.
Nope, none, okay. Carried none, I call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
I, all opposed? None, carried? Now we're down to, uh, nine point one. Uh, bylaw added, be it resolved that the bylaw, bylaw, uh, two zero two three dash zero one, being a bylaw of the rural municipality of West St. Paul, to add outstanding accounts and utility charges to the tax roll for the year twenty twenty-two, be read a second time. Councilor Pakten moves, can I have his seconder, Councilor Bushetti seconds it? Any questions? Councilor Campbell, well, none? Okay, could I call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
I, all opposed? None, carried? And now we have a third, okay, okay. Third reading of the bylaw, two zero two three, added to taxes, resolution.
Mr. Mayor, nine point two is a second reading for your tax.
Oh, that's why we went to third reading, I was wondering, I thought, I thought we had a second. Thank you. Nine point two. Be it resolved that the bylaw two zero two three dash O two, being a bylaw of the rural municipality of West St. Paul, to authorize the cancellation of taxes owing to the municipality of West St. Paul of the years two zero one six, two zero one eight, two zero two zero. twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two be read a second time. Could I have a mover please?
Still moved.
Councilor Clyburn moves, can I have a seconder? Councilor.
I'll second.
Oh, Councilor Campbell seconds it. Any questions? I have one. I guess, uh, two thousand and sixteen, why is it going back so far? Two thousand and eighteen. I looked at it, but I couldn't quite under, it was just a delay or?
Municipal board order.
Let me just pull that up.
And it's the same role? So it's a municipal board order for the same tax roll, three, three years inclusive? So it might have been a decision that came down.
That would have been related to the board of revision.
Oh, is that what it was? Okay. Thank you. Okay, can I, any questions? Councilor Campbell, go ahead, go ahead. Okay, this one, I'll check. Can I call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
I, all opposed? None, carried? Uh, nine point three, second reading of the bylaw twenty twenty-three dash three water levy bylaw. Be it resolved that bylaw twenty twenty-three dash zero three being a bylaw of the rural municipality of West St. Paul to provide for an imposition of water levies on all new lots created by the subdivision of lands within municipality? And repeal bylaw number twenty sixteen dash sixteen be read a second time. Could I have a mover please? Councilor Pack can moves, can I have a seconder? Councilor Bessetti seconds it. Any comments, questions? Councilor Bessetti?
These are the amounts we changed it to, right? Sorry, I just didn't have the old one up here to look at.
It was forty-five hundred, five thousand, and I think.
Forty-five fifty-five and six.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's what Councilor Campbell had called for, right? We discussed that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I call for the, any other questions? Can I call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
I, all opposed? None, okay, carried? Now we are on, uh, nine point four, okay. Third reading of bylaw, uh, twenty twenty-three added to taxes. Be it resolved that the bylaw be, being a bylaw of the rural municipality of West St. Paul to add outstanding accounts and utility charges to the tax roll for the year twenty twenty-two be read a third time and a final time, signed, sealed, and therefore passed as a bylaw of the rural municipality of West St. Paul. Could I have a mover please? Councilor Beshetti moves, can I have a seconder please?
I'll second.
Councilor Clyburn seconds it. Could, uh, any questions, comments? Can I call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
None.
All opposed? None. We all hold it, right? Did you get to record your vote? Okay.
Yep.
Third reading of the bylaw twenty twenty-three. Be it resolved that the bylaw twenty twenty-three dash two being a bylaw of the rural municipality of West St. Paul to authorize the cancelization of taxes owing to the municipality for the years twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two be read a third time and a final time, signed, sealed, and therefore passed as a bylaw of the rural municipality of West St. Paul. Could I have a mover please? Or, you wanna move it?
Nope. Yeah, I'll move it, sure.
Okay. Can I have a seconder please? Councilor Clyburn seconds it. Any questions? None? Okay. Can I call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
In favor?
All opposed? None, carried? Okay. Uh, third reading of the bylaw twenty twenty-three dash three. Be it resolved, uh, water levy bylaw, I should say. Be it resolved that bylaw twenty twenty-three being a bylaw of the rural municipality of West St. Paul to provide for an imposition of the water levy on all new lots created by the subdivision of lands within the municipality of, within the municipality? And repeal bylaw twenty sixteen dash sixteen be read a third and final time, signed, sealed, and therefore passed as a bylaw of the rural municipality of West St. Paul. Could I have a mover please? Councilor Beshetti moves, could I have a?
I'll second.
Oh, Councilor Campbell seconds it. Could I have, uh, any comments?
This is discussed.
Okay, uh, call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
In favor?
Okay. All opposed? None, they're all, okay. That is, uh, number ten. Okay, now we're on ten point one. Received as information, what is that? Okay. Payroll monthly statement. Be it resolved that, uh, payroll of the month of January as follows be approved as presented. Could I have a mover please? Councilor Bessetti moves, can I have a seconder? Councilor Pack can, uh, seconds it. Any comments? None? Okay, so then I'll call for the question. All in, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
I, all opposed? None, carried? Now we go down to fifteen one? Right?
Yep.
Be it resolved that the council of the rural municipality of West St. Paul accept the twenty twenty-one financial audit statements as presented by Exchange Group Accountants, Accountants Limited? Be it, uh, can I move it? Councilor Beshetti moves it, can I have a seconder? Anyone seconding it? Councilor Pack then seconds it? Any comments? None, hearing none? Can I call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
I.
Aye.
All opposed? See, none, carried? Fifteen dash, uh, fifteen point two. Canada Day Reserve Transfer. Be it resolved that the council of the rural municipality of West St. Paul approved the transfer of forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars from the Canada Day Reserve Fund into operating revenue. Can I, can I have a mover please? Councilor Clyburn? Councilor Campbell seconds? Question?
I have questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Is this, uh, the amount, is this amount based from last year plus, uh, allowance for DPs?
No, it looks like this, that's the amount.
That's my question, like, we're, we're the number.
Send that administration. My question is, uh, to the mayor and then to the CEO. If they know it, if they don't know, they may not know. Was there a budget on Canada Day or was it just no budget at all?
Uh, that, that would be best addressed by our, our director of finance. I understand that the, the budget, uh, did, didn't change, that council had, um, set aside funds for that. So how, how our reserve bylaw, the Canada Day reserve bylaw works is, uh, council does, um,
And they put so much aside.
Yeah, you set aside that, that minimum amount, uh, in, in the budget. And then, uh, when we have, uh, expenses, what we do is we transfer from the reserve to the, um, operating revenue side to, for that expense.
I guess my question is, who decided the expenses? Did the mayor decide the expenses?
Well, it's, it's part of the, the.
Structures were there, who the entertainment was.
Right, well, that's your Canada Day committee who organized the event.
There wasn't a Canada Day committee last year, was there?
Yeah.
There was?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would just say going.
We had just declared, we only had a quick, cause it was still up in the air. Are we doing it or are we not?
Yeah, because usually it's not just like, because the fire department is working and do it to help in the fall.
The, if I may also, uh, the fire department typically, uh, will have, uh, um, fundraising events throughout the year. So as the council knows, there was just the Texas Hold'em, uh, poker tournament. That is a fundraiser, those funds would offset these, these amounts. Last year, we weren't able to hold that sort of event. Um, so it's, it's a bit of an anomaly of, of not being able to fundraise while, while still pulling a scaled back event.
I would just suggest that if, if we do, we're doing Canada Day, I'm sure again this year that we have some kind of budget. That it's not, with what I would term a free-for-all. That we're just spending money because we have it. But that we actually, you know, stick to some kind of budget on our, on our Canada Day. We want it to be fun. Just don't wanna be a miser. But I don't want it to be open-ended either. Just, just my observation.
Go ahead, Councilor Shetty.
I think it'd be nice to meet the Canada Day committee with all the council and, you know, I know last year there was some concerns from the department that, you know, they were having problems with the volunteers and the committee and this and that. So I think it would almost work with council and the committee to get together and actually look at, are we gonna, you know, try to restructure in a different way than we're doing this? We pulled out some sports teams last year to do, you know, the parking, this and that. So if we're gonna need to start looking at stuff like that, I'd rather start now than, you know, than last year. We were at the last minute looking for, you know, we had food vendors out instead of the fire department giving burgers and food and that kinda stuff. So I think we should all get on the same page really.
Yeah, I agree. I think there needs to be meeting, uh, the top, the top of the fire department too. Okay.
I, I think it would be a good idea if we maybe asked, uh, four citizen members, you know, to, to volunteer in that committee to join us. I don't know.
Yeah, I agree.
It'd be a good community involvement.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we can get, uh, if we put a call up for volunteers for either four citizens volunteers in the community. And they have their, have, we get some fresh, uh, foot and some good. I think we should discuss that with the fire department because they have a social committee that has volunteers on it. So it's a, that, they, they've got a manual on how to do this to, you know, this is what we're doing, this is how they, so they write it down, that where someone else just have to take over, it's literally pass the manual over and. So let's get their opinion.
The community committee.
Yeah, but no, let's just get their opinion on what level do you need the help at? You know, we don't wanna take the whole thing. You know, it's where you need the help and then let's try and bring the people in to fill in the voids.
But I like your suggestions.
Councilor Campbell?
So, uh, like the fire department hasn't said that they wanna back off from them, them basically running Canada Day, have they?
No.
Oh, okay. I was just, I didn't know.
There was confusion last year.
Okay, okay.
Any other question? Any other comments? No? Okay, can I call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Councilor Campbell goes, aye. All, all, any opposed? None, carried? Yep, fifteen three. Appointment of bylaw officers. Be it resolved that the council of the rural municipality of West St. Paul appoint the following bylaw officers as designated officers of the rural municipality of West St. Paul. Bylaw officer Terry Ferguson, bylaw officer Eric Gersley, and Red River Planning District bylaw officer Trevor Evans. Evans. Can I call for the, um, a motion please to move it? Councilor Campbell moves it. Any secondsers?
Second.
Councilor Bessetti seconds it? Comments?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Councilor Bessetti?
On the naming of the bylaw officers, I can understand naming the ones from West St. Paul. But, uh, if we're doing bylaw enforcement now through Red River Planning, to put a name at that, is that? He works there today, he doesn't work there tomorrow, then we have to reach, change the bylaw yet?
We, we.
No, if, if I may, Mr. Mayor? Um, the, the bylaw, um, de- creates the designated positions. We update who's appointed to the positions by resolution. So correct, if, if that, um, staffing changes within the municipality or Red River, we would again revisit this with a new resolution.
And I, I believe Councilor Beshetti, we just, Red River Planning Board just passed this yesterday. We have designated, they have gone from Prairie bylaw to a designated officer as an employee of Red River Planning.
But the bylaw enforcement officer for Red River Planning worked for, for Prairie bylaw.
Yeah, he did.
So, I, I, like, I don't know the insights, I don't know the insights of why the other company's not doing it anymore. My, my, and I don't wanna know, but.
Well, I can't discuss it because we, in kind of situations, so. But there is a, there is a good reasons for it.
Okay, um, since we're doing this, can we do a little, um, can we watch the next six months of what's been coming out of, you know, the planning? When I sat over there, it seemed to be the same bylaw that we're looking at over and over again? Doing a little, if, if council is okay with it? Just a little report, pick six months and let's go over it? Cause it seems like we've got, you know, now we're gonna have to start again for all, any bylaw that was done. Cause I believe that happened before. We have to start all over again on all the stuff we've been looking at. And some of the bylaw stuff has been dragged on and we've paid money to the planning board already for the bylaw. That's been, the, you know, the bylaw enforcement that's already been done. So I would just like to watch, watch what's going through there on this. Because it's, you know, we're trying to eliminate some problems, but it's, it's, they're not getting eliminated. That's just the plain, nice way to say it.
Um, just to the chair through the, the Councilor Bessetti, um, I, I would say that the Red River Planning Board is, is kinda been all over that right now. And, um, they are addressing the issues.
Great.
But certainly we can look at it and, and they're gonna be reporting to us more often, uh, to the board members. So when we get the report, we can certainly share that. I don't know if we wanna share it in camera. And, uh, we can share it with council.
Please, thank you.
Any other comments? None? I have a, a number of comments. So who is, um, Eric Gersley? Like, I, I don't, who, who is he?
He's a staff member who, who works at, out of the access center.
So, and I guess is, uh, does he have qualifications to be a bylaw officer? Has he experienced as a bylaw officer or like?
Uh, he's being trained under, uh, Terry Ferguson.
So he has, prior to this, he had no experience as a bylaw officer?
That's correct.
Okay. And, um, so why is it that we're going to an extra bylaw officer?
I, I think if you, if you wanna talk about our personal staffing, I think it's best to do in camera.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor.
I can just, it's not on the personal staffing. It's, we, we did, you know, this, I think council and after doing, uh, I guess, surveys and stuff through the municipality, it seemed to be that bylaw was our big, the biggest concern that we saw coming in. And I think, if this has been ongoing to bring on, you know, more bylaw, that's what we've heard. Not now, but previous council, it was always let's bring on more bylaw. And I guess this is the steps into bringing on more bylaw right here in West St. Paul, not through planning.
And if I made, uh, there were, Mr. Ferguson is only part-time bylaw officer. That was part of the problem, I believe.
Correct, neither position will be a dedicated bylaw officer. But under their role, they'll be, with this resolution, they'd be able to, um, take part in that.
Okay, so I'm gonna just go with, uh, Councilor Beshetti here about, uh, wondering about, you know, what he asked for the Red River Planning. Is, is there something that we can have also from our bylaw officers? Basically the same ideas that this is the amount of tickets issued and the same amount of, these are the open ones, these are the closed ones, like, sort of like have a status.
We, we could do something similar to, uh, requests for service, depending on the level of, of detail you want. It might have to be viewed in camera, but we could do something quarterly to, to council.
Um, we do get the, we do get a report. I've seen reports on here for requests for service, what's open, what's closed, right?
Right, now, request for service isn't always, uh, bylaw related, but it does, it does encapsulate those categories.
Yeah.
Um, but if you're looking for some drilled down information, then, then we can provide that to council.
Okay.
Now, I'm just thinking, if they could report, do they report monthly? What they, what?
Yes, the, the CIO position meets monthly, or every three weeks actually, uh, with the community services officer.
Okay, so that's, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So I guess, uh, the community service officers, do they do a monthly report also or?
They do, they do, but, uh, they don't put specifics in their monthly report, which you'll see. They do, they do, but they don't put specifics in their monthly report, which you'll see in the CAO report.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but you wouldn't see specifics about properties, because that would, that would be private, but we could certainly look at doing some reporting to council in, in camera for that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not looking at properties, I'm just looking at, you know, they went ahead and visited five properties today, issued three, three orders, they, you know.
We could, we could look at.
You know, generalities, it, it doesn't have to be, you know, names of who, who the residents are. So at least we can get a grasp on what, what activities our bylaw officers are doing, since we're all, since we're concerned about it, I mean.
And we should actually get a report from the Red River Planning regarding our problem properties.
Yes.
Yeah. We have a couple of problem properties.
I think just one problem.
Well, I mean.
Did we not have, or were we not trying to have Mr. Ferguson come in quarterly? We did it in camera, did we not? We did it once or twice, we came in with a spreadsheet, you know, major problems.
Okay, that could be.
It, it may have happened from time to time, but that was never a regular part of your.
Yeah, we were just trying to see which way we could do it because of the privacy thing and what would come up, but it was more, I guess, detailing our problem areas. That's, that's the way I'm gonna, you know, and at what level things are at and that kind of stuff, just to kind of give us an update.
Yeah, we could do the properties as well, as long as it was in camera and as long as it was not, the report was put out to the public.
Yeah, we, we just have to be careful about the privacy.
Yeah, yeah.
On, on these things, but we can certainly look at providing more information to you.
Delinquent vehicles on such-and-such address, you know, what's happened, what stage you were at. That would be good to know.
Well, exactly. We're all getting phone calls about stuff that, you know, what's going on with this property? We called you three months ago, right? At least for us to know, well, bylaw's working on it, you know, it's illegal or it's.
Or we're in this stage.
Yep.
Yeah.
Hasn't fallen off the radar.
Yeah, it's countability, right? I like that idea.
Yeah, we could add, we could add that as in camera, I haven't included the whole group enough.
Yeah. Good.
So what?
Counselor Campbell, are you okay with something like that?
Yeah, no, for sure. I think it's a very good idea. And like I said, I also agree with the, you know, getting a little bit more information back from Red River Planning. I'm sure, you know, I don't need to bring up which properties that we're talking about. I'm sure everybody is aware. So I'd be, instead of, you know, discussing that now, I think everybody is looking for updates on, on a few hotspots.
So what did we agree to?
We're, we're gonna get feedback. I, I believe that we are gonna be getting more frequent reports from Red River Planning on bylaw, new bylaw officer. We just passed that yesterday in a special meeting, in putting, instituting or engaging this bylaw officer. So we did our final reading, so he's good to go now, and then we can bring an update in a month or so.
So how frequently should we get these reports?
You want, I think, I think we're asking from him monthly, but I'll check on that.
But I think having our bylaw probably quarterly at our, at our level, like, I'd like to keep an eye on the, the one there. Just, I did it for years and it, there was a lot of.
In the summer though, you might want it more frequent. Quarterly's every, every what?
I guess we could start it quarterly and if we see that we're gonna do it more, it's, yeah, we could always start quarterly, then, really frequent.
Sure.
I, I, I'm thinking we should start monthly and if we find it's too much, then.
Or that, yeah.
Yeah, we'd start monthly.
It's, it's better to go down than up.
Sure.
Because you've got those levels of, of, you know, seven days, fourteen days, twenty-one days.
Yeah. Fine with anybody, just bring this information.
Yep, okay. So we'll do it monthly?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, any other comments? Can I call for their question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None? Take, carry. Next is fifteen fourteen, or fifteen point four, anti-harassment and respectful workplace policy. Be it resolved that the council of the rural municipality of West Saint Paul approve and adopt anti-harassment and respectful workplace policy A D N twenty twenty-three dash O two as presented. Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Pacatan moves. Can I second or?
I'll second it, sure.
Claver seconds it. Any comments?
I was just gonna say.
Counselor Claver?
Yeah, yeah. I was just gonna say, I like that there's a procedure here and there, there are steps for the complaint, and then it's clear to, to people what's supposed to be happening. The only, and I think you covered this, but I'm gonna ask the question, if there was a complaint against the CAO by a employee, would that employee then go to council? Or how would the employee proceed with the complaint? Because if you, if you complain, let's say, let's say, I don't know, say employee had a problem with the CAO, but the CAO gets all the complaints, so maybe the CAO would squash that complaint. Does the, does the employee have other avenues to complain then?
So I'm just having a quick look if it's, if I see that it's addressed.
Because there has, in my opinion, there has to be a mechanism if it's the CAO too. So what would happen if it was the CAO? Could that employee have some kind of mechanism that would be fair? Because everybody reports to the CAO.
Right. If, if council also wishes, under, under the procedures, item C, where we address if, if it's the immediate manager who is the respondent, that the complainant should report to the CAO, we could add some verbiage there, that if the, if the CAO is the respondent, the complainant should report to the mayor.
Yeah, just so that there's a mechanism?
If council agrees with that change.
And the mayor can bring it to council?
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, that is. Yep. Any other comments? Counselor Campbell? Oh, none? None? Okay, I, I guess I'll.
So you've added that a dead end, so as amended?
Yeah, so that the resolution will be as amended.
Okay. Do I have to say that? Okay. Be it resolved that, oh, wait here. Okay, after we read the resolution?
No, just ask, we have a mover and a second.
Okay. Can I call the question as amended, moved as, as amended?
Yeah.
Counselor Bessetti?
But we do have a mover and second, so now you're ready to call for the.
Was there a mover and second?
Was Counselor Pactigan and yourself.
Okay. Okay, good, yeah, one more.
Okay, call for the question as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any opposed? None. Carry. Okay.
So for the conduct was people?
Yep.
Do you have a question?
Yes, now we got questions here. Have any, does anyone have any questions? Come forward, please.
Jerry Valenki, three five four Gardere Drive. I have a, a question about, you know, about this delegation. I have cameras and my cameras are, you know, they come to my phone and everything, and they seem to not really tell us all the costs, because like, you said, you mentioned there's gonna be a cost from hydro, and you didn't say how much the cloud fees be. You said there is gonna be a, a maintenance cost of fifteen dollars, but the phone, like, my phone, if I use my cameras a lot, if I'm watching, they'll come up with a warning that I'm using data. I have unlimited data because I, I burn data like crazy with the cameras, if I'm watching all my cameras and, and, and going back to them, I burn a lot of data on it, and that's expensive, especially if you go with the data over the, over the, the plan, that, you know, you buy a plan with so much data, and then if you go over it, it's, it's a lot of data. And he said, one thing that he said that wasn't really clear, he said, the question was asked, how far from the cameras can you go with the phone? Well, if the cameras are being connected by wifi, then you, that's the distance. Otherwise, they have, like, my cameras are on internet. So are we gonna be supplying internet to every camera? Like, this is, this is the way my cameras are, are, are used. But the, the one thing was, he'd never mentioned what kind of camera, like, what was the model of the camera? Like, I mean, we should be able to have information. It was nice to have, you know, all the fine words up there, but there was no information about the camera. So those are my concerns, because, like, I paid a hundred and seventy-five dollars for my camera, they were. I don't know, two thousand dollars. Like, it just seems, we are the whack with the information. But anyhow, that's just not knowing enough. Like, he may have a perfect answer. And as far as discussions about that building.
Excuse me, can we just deal with one question at a time, please? Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, just, you asked about the cellular per, per, how close you have to be?
Yeah.
That's, I asked how many cellular networks you would need per camera. So that's why it's gonna depend on the distance. Like, if you have one on Main and then one over on, at Legends, that probably won't work because it won't pick up on the same network. So that's what I, that's what I specifically asked them.
Yeah, but, but what does it, how does he connect to the network?
They're not, it, it's, it's all through cellular data, but if, let's say, just using examples, one in the trails and then one across the street in Parkview, those would probably be able to hook up through the same network.
Well, I can go through all my cameras right from here. I mean, it's not a problem.
But these aren't wifi, these aren't wifi cameras.
No, on the internet, but how is he doing it if it's not wifi and it's not internet? What's?
Launcher's data.
Yeah, it's also.
Self data.
Yeah, well.
SIM card, SIM card.
It's going through the phone, just like, like mine.
Only when you ask for it. Only when, it's not a cost, it's, it's a fee when you get alerted. We got as much information as you, this was just to bring.
Yes, just to bring.
So I'm, I, like, it, it may be a great idea, I don't know. I'm, from the experience with my cameras, these are the questions that I ask myself, like, I mean, the fees, we pay seven dollars a month for camera.
No, I, I, I think, like, you bring up a lot of good questions, and, you know, I, I think we all probably have the same questions, but we see that.
That's okay, that's fine. Like, I, I mean, it, it just, for, I mean, nobody said yes for buying it or that, but it, it just, you know, you have to have a little bit more impetus to see what, what it is. I mean, it may be great, like, I don't know.
No, no, that's true, and if, if we go with this, if, if we go, it might not be with this person, might be with somebody else, but it is questions that we will be asking. They wouldn't have to justify those costs. So it is not something that, it's just gonna be.
Because the hydro would, is it a, is it a yearly fee? Is it just a one-time, you know, it's like, like, like I have a light on a pole on a hydro pole and I know that costs yearly. But anyhow, and, and the discussion about that one building, the one thing that I say is, like, we're trying to make, or council's trying to make this forever and ever. Council's come and go. If we ever decided here, it'd be changed in four years' time. It'll probably take four years to develop this development, and, and then again, it, like, we said, we're not allowing to have these things in the subdivision, but we all know that things are on the subdivision. That's why we have bylaw officer and all this is because they're not complying with. I mean, I have, right next door to me, I have a scrapyard that isn't allowed. I put a, a request for service four years ago, haven't heard a word. So this is what I'm saying, like, you know, like, you, you, trying to make it so that it's forever and ever, it's not gonna be forever and ever, because everybody has opportunity to apply, not to the municipal or to the province, so, you know, anyhow.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Norma Alberg, three twelve Indian Avenue. I, it was interesting to hear the conversation about the added to taxes and the, the enforcement. So I thought that there's some pieces of information that are connected, so I took the added to taxes and the canceled taxes, and I went specifically with the added to taxes, I looked at six years' worth. So from two thousand eighteen, which would be the activity from two thousand seventeen forward to now. So I thought that if there was an infraction, that perhaps that would get discussed in camera, and so then, there is information out there that I won't bring forward now, but it is available. Basically, through the, the planning site, you're able to connect and find the pieces of numerical information that belongs to a property. And so I wanted to see if there was sort of repeat offenders, and if there was also some dealings of that. So when I looked at property titles, the numbers that were dealt with in camera, so we don't know any information about those. Over that time, there was ten properties, and those were all different, unique properties over this six-year time period. There was only one of those that ever had a bylaw infraction amount applied to its taxes. So the others, I suspect, are, I, I think that these would be kind of the extreme ends that get into a full discussion, and then they were perhaps handed over to Red River, and we don't know then what the result is. So there's nothing that tracks it through West Saint Paul, and we don't ever know the result. So I think your conversation about enforcement is excellent if there's a, if you can get a process in place where that aggregate or just numbers of information can come back to you from our own enforcement and from Red River enforcement, and it's just saying, these are the categories, and this is the numbers. You, you never have to go to the properties, but it gives you a sense of, what are we dealing with and are we dealing with them effectively? If, if I looked other than the bylaw to the weeds, it's kind of tempting to sign on for the program because it's cheaper than what I pay my guys to come into my place. There are a number of properties that I'm sure the administration is well aware, that have, that have had the, the weeds dealt with, or the mowing or whatever, four, five, six years in a row. And, but it's pretty much the same kind of a fine or the added to taxes that comes to it, and maybe council has to look at having more of a progressive discipline kind of thing. So, yeah, your weeds can grow one year, that's okay, we kind of understand it, and this is what it will cost. Let's say it's, clearly your property size is gonna be connected to your taxes, so let's say it's ten percent of your taxes, we're gonna charge you, or five percent, pick a number. And then the second year, okay, yeah, now we're gonna have a little conversation, it's gonna hurt a little more, maybe it's twenty or twenty-five percent of your taxes. And then if you're back after that, it's like, okay, you know what, now you're using us for your lawn service, and the public works guys, they got enough to do, they have all of the, the, the public things. So now we, we, we're gonna turn up the volume and maybe it'll be, the charges to your taxes will be equal to your taxes. And now maybe you'll actually phone a lawn service and have the lawn service do it, I don't know. I mean, it seems like there are things that can still be done to discourage people from using the R M services. And, and then you would also.
Sorry, do you have a question in there?
Yeah.
Do you have a question? I was listening for your question.
Well, the question then, on the, that, that was just a comment and a suggestion for looking at the enforcement. From the tax cancellations over those. From the uh, uh, tax cancellations over those six years, there was a pattern before where. They were related to being reassessed and or there was things happening on a property. This year, they're more related to developments. And so I would like to ask how it's decided and by whom, what happens with taxes. The the grouping of the cancellation of taxes this year was a unique pattern. And it was related to new developments in uh, like Meadowlands, Parkview, the industrial park. Um, where there are major development areas. And so how, since that seems to be another new thing for us because of our rapid development. How is that uh decision made and by whom as to when there's an altering of the taxes?
I think uh we'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
I think uh Counselor Campbell had something? Yeah, no?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I I just had one comment to uh to her comments. I I don't believe the R M staff uh does any of the grass cutting that gets farmed out to a third party. Uh, not like almost a hundred percent of it, as far as I know. I know Lloyd Buhey, I think, is who does all of the R M's added to taxes, grass cutting. So the R M staff is not uh, you know, taking up their time cutting uh, cutting people's lawns or or grass or weeds. But I do agree, it is too cheap, the the fees that we do charge on that. It should be a an upcharge for administration. Seeing as we do, you know, charge administration fees on, you know, sewer and water. Ta- uh, tax bills and everything like that, that there should be a larger upcharge for having to arrange that for people's properties based on complaints.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Delinda Link, ten forty-five Toshack Road. And I sent a question that was not discussed, so uh didn't come up in your discussion, so I'm gonna say it again here. Uh, regarding the, a question regarding the twenty twenty-one final audited statements. There was a final audit letter attached to the agenda. And the management letter uh is descri- our management letter is described. As an attachment to that final audit letter. But this and this attachment apparently refers to the auditor's evaluation of the accounting procedures and systems of control used by the R M. And this is a quote, that any errors or irregularities were described in our management letter. Now, the management letter is not included for residents to access in the agenda. So I'm wondering what the explanation for this attachment not being accessible to the public. That's the first question.
I guess uh, can we, you've asked this question before? Is that what you said earlier? Have you asked this before?
I sent this in to you this afternoon, quite up four, four thirty, maybe.
Okay.
Ahead of time.
Okay.
So that I could listen during your discussions and maybe some of these issues would come up.
Okay.
I wouldn't have to ask any questions.
Um. So just wait, I think Counselor Claver wants to make a comment here.
I I would just say that I see that you sent it at four thirty. I actually just looked at it right before I walked in the meeting.
Right.
Because it was in transit. Um, I don't know, that's up to, it's up to our staff whether or not that's added to the agenda. I don't know if that's practice of, have we normally added it to the agenda?
I can I can speak to that. So uh, counsel, as you know, that is discussed with our auditor in camera. And so counsel, counsel is aware of that. We don't uh, you see that at the point of. Uh, the draft financial statements in camera, and we don't have that.
Can we check with the auditor whether or not we could attach this because really there's nothing.
Follow-up question.
There's nothing to hide in this letter at all.
Other follow-up question, is this letter, um, follow-up question, through the mayor to the C A O? Is this ma- uh, management letter marked confidential?
I don't have a copy in front of me, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I I really would like a an answer to that question. Um, and I don't think I fell asleep. Was item fifteen point four anti harassment and respectful worse workplace policy discussed?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, no, I didn't hear talk about any substantial differences between what is proposed in policy, the new policy. And the current policy, the one that was crafted in twenty ten. Other than the improper use of power of authority is considered as a form of harassment in the new policy. So like, I I'd really like to hear what people think are the differences between these two policies?
Well, there's there, can I speak to this?
No.
There are different definitions for discrimination. Some of them are related to gender. Gender-determined characteristics, sexual orientation. I don't know if those were included before. Uh, genderism is that, I I doubt it because it was two thousand sixteen.
I'm talking about substantial differences. So you haven't read the other one?
I think a gender or, a gender orientation or characteristic is a substantial difference between two thousand sixteen and now. So that's uh. As you know, in the last year or two, that has been a substantial difference in many policies.
Yeah.
So that has been included. And there's also, and and I don't know, you had this before. Um, cause I know we asked for it, which which was the procedure. Did you have the procedure for handling complaints before the same way?
Yeah, it was quite similar.
It's quite similar.
It's very similar.
Yeah, and we added, um, as you know, we amended it. I don't know if you were listening to that part. We amended so if somebody had a complaint against the C A O.
Well, I heard you talking about that, but I wasn't, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Now that it's proved, I'm sure it's maybe you'll be able to get it in the next little while once it's up on the, either through the office or it might be up.
It's on the agenda and it it does sound that Counselor Link has referred to the original policy. She does have a copy of that, so I'm sure she can see the changes between.
I had a copy of the policy in my black binder from previous council. And that's the only visa I was given to access it. It's not accessible on the website, nor is our procedural bylaw accessible on the website.
Was there anything that you wanted, Mayor, is there anything that our C, acting C E O wanted to add to um, the conversation as far as substantial changes?
Nope.
I just come on that.
Go ahead.
It it's probably not on there. This is just my opinion. This is more of an in- a pol- internal policy to do with staff and council. So that maybe that's probably one of the reasons it's not gonna be go on there because it's, it it doesn't have to do with the.
That's correct.
United States general public.
It's an employee policy.
It's an employee policy, so that's why the policy stays.
Well, how about the procedural policy? Procedure's probably, it's not, I, people should be aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we go to in camera. Be it resolved that in accordance with section one fifty-two of the Mississippi Act, counsel has now moved to in camera to discuss personnel. And be it further resolved that in accordance with section eighty-three, one B of the Mississippi Act. Any issues that are discussed are kept confidential until discussed at the regular meeting of council. Can I have a mover please? Counselor Patkan moves. Counselor Boyer McFlaber seconds it. Oh, can I call for a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, thank you. So be it resolved that this meeting of council.
Mr. Mayor, you still need to do your rise and report.
Okay, that's the rise and report is that we discuss personnel. Uh, we go down to adjournment. Be it resolved that this meeting of council stands adjourned at eight twenty-three P M on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Can I have a mover? Counselor Beshetti moves. Second her. Counselor Patkan seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? None, carry. Thank you. Adjourned.